And Alderman Jean Baptiste, did you want to remove taxis?
Yeah, my suggestion is that, I mean, given the fact that we have the role ordinance in the package and it was late, maybe, you know, for long debate on this, the suggestion is to hold this for another two weeks at council for action.
Second.
It's a wonderful idea. It's been moved and seconded to hold this. Could we have a voice vote? Is that all right with everyone? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Terrific.
And Madam Mayor, just for the folks representing the taxi industry, what this means then is this will be back on the city council's full agenda for discussion at their next regular meeting, which is on Monday, September 27th. So that would not be back in committee. It's now in the full council, so you would not have to be here at the 5:30 time. The seven to eight time period would be the time period that you would come back and then this would be discussed at that point.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes, Madam Mayor, at that time, because there is so much interest in this and people who work 24 hours a day sometime without sleeping are here representing their interest in this matter, I would like this set as a special order as the first item on the council's agenda that evening.
Absolutely.
So that they can all go home.
Second there.
And my apologies to you for being here this late. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agendas?
Yes. And hopefully, everybody will listen carefully because you may never hear this again. Very important things may not be discussed tonight because people are too tired. So I will go through this as quickly as possible. The first item on our consent agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of August 9. City of Evanston payroll through 8:15 and 8:29 and the amount of $2,387,380, $2,297,424.13. The city bills through September 14 and the amount of $4,358,060.65. Credit card bills, whoa, this is bigger than ours, $105,210.42. The administration Public Works Committee requests your approval of a contract award for asphalt crack sealing to SKC Construction in the amount of $40,000. We ask your approval also of a single source purchase from IPS Group Inc. of 41 IPS single space parking meters in the amount of $20,295. The committee requests your approval of purchase of one ambulance for the fire and life safety department in the amount of $213,847 from Foster Coach Sales Incorporated. We request your approval of a contract extension for Groot for recycling collection for an additional three-month contract extension until December 1, 2010 for residential condominium recycling collection with Groot at the rate of $4.36 per residential unit per month and the collection from condominiums at $2.03 per unit. The extension is, as you heard tonight, for continued collection until the sanitation proposals can be determined. A 3.5, we request your approval of contract extension to Flood Brothers for condo garbage collection at the rate of $8.08 per unit per month for the same reason. We ask your approval for a change order number one for the high lift pumping station roof replacement project in the amount of $33,384, which would make the contract $109,762. Your approval is requested for contract settlement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 742. This will authorize the city manager to execute a two-year fiscal year, two fiscal year collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 742, beginning March 1, 2010 through December 31, 2011. A 5 is Resolution 51 R 10, which authorizes the manager to enter into a sublease renewal for the property at 1826 Central Street from the Union Pacific Railroad Company with Mary Lou Smith for operation of the Top of the Tracks Coffee Shop. The lease is five years, beginning September 15, 2010, ending in 2015. A 5% increase in the monthly rent agreement is built in. We ask your approval of Resolution 53 R 10, which requests certification from Cook County Clerk in order to amend Title 1, Chapter 13 of the City Code Municipal Elections. This has to do with administering an election using a ranked ballot in city and township elections and only certain absentee voters will be affected. I'm, A 7, the taxi ordinance is off the consent agenda and will be a special order of business at our next meeting. Planning and Development, that committee asks your approval of a request for the extension of an expiration date of the planned development at 63149 Chicago Avenue through, it's a one-year extension through December 8, 2011. We ask your approval of an allocation for Family Promise Chicago North Shore from the McKinney Emergency Shelter Grant in the amount of $6,000. The committee also requests your approval of a redevelopment agreement for Neighborhood Stabilization Program Number Two and program update. This agreement covers the acquisition and rehab of a minimum of 100 foreclosed or abandoned units of housing in Census Tracts 8092 and 8102. Next is Ordinance 68010, which has been amended and you will get a clean copy at our next meeting. This is for granting a major variation relating to building height to permit construction of a multifamily residence located at 910 Hinman Avenue. And the major variation that the committee approved is for 54 feet, 8 inches, which is the Spark and staff recommendation. But the clean copy will come in the next meeting. Human Services Committee asks your approval of the township bills in the amount of $200 and $2,317.35. I'm assuming that H 2 is off the consent agenda, correct? I mean, nobody asked me, but no, okay. Ordinance, please, okay. Ordinance 51010 is off the consent agenda. Mobile food vendors is off the consent agenda. H 4, the chicken ordinance, off the consent agenda. With that, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's been moved and seconded that we pass the consent agenda. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burrus?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Nine to nothing, the consent agenda passes. All right, who's head of Human Services? Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Human Services Committee decided to move the H 3, this is regarding, Ordinance 64010, amending Title 8 of the City Code to add Chapter 26, mobile food vehicle vendors.
H 2.
I'm sorry, we're doing H 2 first? I'm sorry, I missed that. I'm sorry, Alderman Holmes.
Still moving.
Okay, just trying to move it along. Okay.
Alderman Holmes? Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
This is for introduction. I'll slow down. It's Ordinance 51010, amending Title 9, Chapter 6 of the City Code to create the Community Accountability Truancy Program. And as I said, it's for introduction.
Alderman Holmes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, we kept this in the Human Services Committee. We've been discussing this for about a year and a half. And I have been, I've had some concerns about this ordinance from the beginning. And in looking at it in terms of the interpersonal, I mean, intergovernmental agreement, I really feel that there's no need for an ordinance. I think that an ordinance really puts a whole nother spin on this and, from my perspective and from my community, would have a real negative view for the police department. And so I would really not like to have an ordinance, not to have an ordinance at all, but I'd like for they to go back to the committee or back to staff to work on it in a different way. If we really want parents to be responsible, then I think we have to come with an ordinance that says that, rather than the way this is written.
So did you move to return it to committee?
I'm sorry, I'd make a motion to move it back to the committee.
Second.
Alderman Grover?
Never mind, thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to send it back to committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Alderman Burrus?
No.
Oh, Burrus.
Point of information, Madam Mayor. Does that mean it's still in the introduction category, but it's going back to committee, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll now move on to H 3, Ordinance 64010, amending Title 8 of the City Code to add Chapter 26, mobile food vehicle vendors. The Human Services Committee has sent this on to council for consideration and discussion. And I move...
I move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded.
All the questions?
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to amend the ordinance in the following way. I would like to exempt Noys Street between Sherman Avenue and Maple Avenue from the ordinance, as well as Benson Avenue between Church Street and Clark Street.
Could you explain?
Yes. There are seven restaurants on Noys Street between Sherman and Maple. All of them are opposed and feel very threatened by the mobile food truck. I think they, frankly, at the beginning, they were hoping that the Civic Center could be exempted. I explained to them that that was not going to happen. But I told them that I would be happy to represent them and bring to the council exempting the area of Noys Street between Sherman and Maple. You heard tonight from the owner of Bat 17, who is on Benson Avenue between Clark and Church. He has, I believe, been in contact by email with most of you and stated his objection and also his concerns about the ordinance. And on that basis, I would like to move to exempt Benson Avenue as well.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to exempt Alderman Tindham?
This was regarding, not the amendment proposed, but another consideration.
Okay, let's deal with the amendment first. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I also spoke to one of the business owners in the area and understood the concerns that they have. I don't know that it, I understand that he has the concern, but I don't think it's an intention, at least of this particular applicant, for this, to operate in a way that would actually be a problem or an issue. Nevertheless, I did speak with the applicants. I don't think that they have a problem with that exception, understanding the concerns that the, some of these business owners have.
Alderman Rainey?
I didn't get the part about exempting Benson. Where on Benson?
It's Benson Avenue between Church and Clark. It's where Bat 17 is located. Evanston Athletic Club is there, Merle's is there.
Well, I've spoken to you about these exemptions, and I'm not really concerned with what the applicant thinks about this, because there are lots of restaurants in this town. And I want to say one thing on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is, number one, a longtime Evanston resident, and, number two, a huge contributor to the tax base by virtue of the fact that he has two restaurants already here. So we're not talking about some outsider who's coming in to steal business away from other businesses. We're talking about a very established restaurateur who knows the business, who I don't believe is going to be pulling up in front of Bat, whatever it is, and trying to sell food out of his food truck. I'm concerned about, you know, not allowing service on certain streets. I just think, I just think it seems so restrictive and so provincial and so, such a negative feeling that I have about it. I just, I just can't imagine the truck pulling up in front of any of those locations. It's just not going to happen. They're going to go where there's a lot of business. And, you know, sitting in front of the Noys Street Cafe is not going to make him money. So I just think it's so narrow-minded and just so anti-new ideas and new development that it just really bothers me. And I'm sorry, Judy, but I'm going to have to vote against this.
Alderman Holmes?
I, the south side of Noys between Maple and Sherman is in my ward. And I did speak to one owner who spoke for another owner there, and they were concerned about the truck parking in front of their businesses. And I explained that that wasn't going to happen. And I was hoping that, I just don't like the idea of banning, having something banned on the street would make it just not really friendly. So I certainly can't support that either.
Okay. Alderman Jean Baptiste and then...
They had the language of the ordinance. Can somebody just read, isn't, aren't, isn't the truck restricted from parking in front of restaurants anywhere?
Yes.
Can we?
Right. It's subsection C of 8-26-3, which is the section called Location Review and Restrictions. And it reads, "It shall be unlawful for a mobile food vehicle vendor to park, stand, or operate in a location which is adjacent to or within 100 feet of a licensed food establishment." Now.
Thank you.
That answered your question. Alderman Fisk?
I'm sorry, 100 feet isn't very far away. And Alderman Rainey, no one, everyone thinks that these applicants are wonderful. But unfortunately, we have to deal with the language of the ordinance, which is the language of the ordinance. And given the fact that there are these seven restaurants in a location, all of whom feel very strongly about it, and all of whom who have reached out to, at least, me to express their concerns, I don't see that there is a better way of dealing with this right now. I really don't want to increase the number of feet from 100 to 500. I don't think, I don't think that's very conducive to making this work for the applicants. It is very difficult in these economic times to say to these small restaurant owners who are serving food very similar to what is going to be offered by the mobile truck, and who seem very concerned about the viability of their businesses in competition with us, and who have expressed a concern that it is the more affluent restaurants who would be able to invest in this type of vehicle and move into areas that, where there are businesses who don't feel that they can compete very well. It's very hard to say to them that we don't appreciate them. If it were one business, or even two businesses of seven, I probably would not be up here tonight advocating for this. But it is the businesses in this, this small and relatively fragile business district. And that's why I'm here asking for your consideration.
Alderman Wilson, then Alderman Rainey?
Thank you. Again, I do understand the concerns. There are probably some gaps in the block where maybe it's, you know, less than 100 feet. And I understand that we're dealing with an ordinance that will ultimately potentially apply to other operations. But, you know, I think this is a, this is a reasonable compromise based on all of the effort through the committee, the applicant's process. And, you know, I suggested to the business owner that I spoke to, if it doesn't work out or there's a problem, let us know right away. If there's something that needs to get addressed, we can, we can double back and make any adjustments that are necessary. Hopefully, it will never come to that. But, you know, I'm certainly open-minded to doing that or making appropriate adjustments to what can and can't be done. So I don't think it would be fair to play favorites. Essentially, what we'd be doing is we'd be picking this group of restaurants over all of the other restaurants in the city. And I don't think that that, that there's an appropriate basis for doing that.
Alderman Rainey?
I don't want to pile on, but I'm so glad we don't do this with restaurants. Because if we did this with restaurants, we wouldn't have Pete Miller's, we wouldn't have the restaurants all in that area. They wouldn't be allowed. I mean, we don't do that for people. I'm sorry, you can't go in because there's competition. But in this case, this truck is so expensive, it's not going to pull up in front of another restaurant trying to divide up the few customers that each of them get. It's just not going to happen. And so I think it sends a terrible message to the restaurant community and to the food service community in general. I think it's just wrong.
Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. By my very rough calculation, 100 feet, just on Noys, east of the easternmost restaurant, which would be Fresh, puts the truck anyway on the other side of Sherman, perhaps. And as to the west, the closest the truck would get to the westernmost restaurant in that two-block stretch of Noys would already be at Maple. And I think with the concentration of restaurants in that stretch of Benson, that the 100-foot clearance covers us for that stretch of Benson because there's stained glass at the north end of that block. So 100 feet away from stained glass moves the truck anyway off that block of Benson, at least at the north end. And likewise, for the south part of that block of Benson. So I think, I think, Alderman Fisk, that your concerns about those two concentrations of restaurants are taken care of by the language of the ordinance itself.
Alderman Fisk?
If we can hold to your measurements, I'd be happy to do that. I know that Sherman Avenue, for example, is a 100-foot right-of-way itself, so it certainly doesn't put it east of Sherman. I, as far as restaurants are concerned, the model for a small restaurant, for a restaurant that, the size of most of these, not including Pete Miller's, is that you want to group your restaurants as close as possible together. Restaurants actually feed off of one another, especially if you have different menus. They're not competing. They're actually very complimentary to one another because no one wants to eat the same kind of food every night. So I don't think it sends the wrong message to the restaurant community. In fact, the people who have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to build the traditional brick-and-mortar restaurant have exhibited a commitment, not only to the area where they have chosen to build their business, but also to Evanston. And I don't think it is fear that's driving. I think it's an honest look at how difficult these economic times are for some of these small restaurateurs. And they're trying to do the best they can to read and interpret the ordinance, look at the food truck, and decide for themselves whether or not this poses a risk for their businesses. And frankly, they've seen or have decided that it does.
All right, seeing no further lights, it's been moved and seconded to amend the motion. So we'll vote on the amendment first. All in favor of the amendment? I guess we'd better do a roll call.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
No.
Alderman Nguyen?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
No.
Alderman Tindham?
No.
Alderman Grover?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Burrus?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Eight to one?
All right, the amendment fails. Next is vote on the ordnance, oh, Alderman Tindham, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's late, and I know I had previously asked staff to consider an amendment to this ordinance about exterior graphics on the truck itself. I would actually, I have not seen it. I would actually be satisfied at this point referring it to staff to just put on the agenda. I think, you know, this is something we're not treating as we do any other commercial business. And it really, in my mind, should be treated as any restaurant with limitations on signage and graphics. This is not really a truck or a billboard. It is a restaurant on wheels. The, I've seen the graphics for Hummingbird. They're quite nice. And I don't think this, so I need to express this with regard to this project. But in future projects, I think it's something I might want to consider. If you think, is this an amendment that, I haven't seen it, so I don't know that it would, you want to give it a try, ma'am?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we do have a proposed floor amendment that I could pass out if you're so inclined. We can consider it right on the spot.
Staff would recommend that. Alderman Tindham was kind enough to relay this. And even given the hour, if we have language already prepared, I think, again, as has been previously stated, while this first owner, I think, has done many things correctly, we would like to make sure that the ordinance is in place to do that. And I'll read while Grant is handing out, and that would be adding a Section J to 8-26-6. So that would be on page 355 of your agenda packet. "All identifying information, logos, advertising, decorations, or other displays on the exterior of a mobile food vehicle shall conform to the purposes set forth in Section 4-12-2 of the Evanston City Code regulating commercial signage to the extent applicable. In particular, exterior displays shall be designed to minimize confusion or distraction that jeopardizes vehicular and pedestrian safety and shall be harmonious with the surroundings and consistent with the character of the community in which the motor food vehicle operates." So Alderman Tindham, if that meets with your approval.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to move for approval.
Second.
Alderman Rainey?
Well, I want to ask, does this mean that the truck goes to the Sign Appeals Board that meets, what, once a month? So if we pass this tonight and the board doesn't meet for another month, these people get held up another month? That's all I'm asking.
The amendment does not require going to the Sign Appeals Board.
Where does it go? How does it get, I mean, it's a thing that says it has to meet certain standards. Who determines that it meets those standards?
It's conforming to the purposes. And I think that for purposes of considering the floor amendment right now, this is, this is a situation that it frames the issue. And with respect to the enforcement and compliance mechanism, it's something that is subject to further consideration. But right now, we purposely tried to leave it open-ended such that action could be taken on the ordinance tonight, as well as this amendment. But what we tried to do based upon the time constraints we had is at least get something in front of the council that would at least talk about this issue and address it.
And Madam Mayor, members of Alderman Rainey, we could add, as determined by the Director of Community Development, so that there is some arbiter that's so named. Sorry?
Marty?
Marty Lyons currently.
Alderman Wilson?
What is 1412, too?
Yeah.
What does it say?
What does?
Or maybe you can just pass it down and we can look at it.
Yeah. Is it the sign?
It looks long.
Yes, it's...
That's what it is.
G H. That's what it is. G and it should be H.
That's, that's, that's the purposes in general welfare section of the sign regulation. And there's...
Just read this whole thing as we pass it. Just read it.
I'll read it. Okay. Sure.
Speaks to A, B, and C. Healthy economy. Essentially, in, in a word, signs are recognized as being beneficial to a healthy economy and that they should express the identity of the businesses or the proprietors associated with those activities. Item B, effective communication. A reasonable and orderly sign should be legible, harmonious with the surroundings, protected, protective of the value of architectural resources, respectful of the rights of nearby property owners, and appropriate to the function in which it pertains. And section C, public welfare. Sign regulations should promote public welfare, minimize blighting influences posed by visual clutter, decay, and neglect, and eliminate confusion and distractions which jeopardize vehicular and pedestrian safety.
So, in other words, this doesn't require an additional approval. It's just if it's a problem and someone complains, we can write them up or do whatever it is we do with regard to the problem.
Alderman, I think that's a very accurate characterization of the approach we sought to take with this floor amendment, realizing that as the ordinance is implemented, this is an issue that may be considered on an ongoing basis.
Thank you.
Alderman Rainey?
I think it messes up the ordinance, quite frankly. And obviously, if this is such a great ordinance that we're going to apply to this ordinance, the sign ordinance, you forget your trip down Howard Street a couple of weeks ago where there probably isn't one sign that complies with that ordinance. So, I wish that the maker of this amendment would withdraw it for tonight and bring it back once we've established this. I'm, I'm not saying that these trucks should, you know, have absolutely no restrictions in terms of what they look like. Because I've got a couple of trucks in my ward that ought to be blown up. And that's because they're painted in a graffiti-like way that is very offensive. So, I understand your point. But how about we let this nice, clean, well-written ordinance go through tonight and then add it back after the fact? That's all I'm asking.
What is wrong with it?
I don't see what this does.
Alderman Tendem?
Thank you. I just, I see this as just part of the overall approval process that is a one-step process. This is part of the whole package, not a signage issue, not a, you know, a, a graphics issue. It really just is part of the original package that is considered as a whole.
Could I just respond one second? We have had this ordinance before us for, what, four months now? And to, to hand out something at 12:30 at night to make me think about it, I think is just wrong. I know all of you are much smarter and much more awake than I, but I think adding this in now when it could have been done months ago, it should have been done months ago.
It's been moved and seconded, and I'm not very awake, but I think, I think we should vote on this.
Madam Mayor, shouldn't this be H rather than J?
Yes, it should be H.
Yeah, it seems that it should be H.
It's not J. It's only go to G.
Yes.
It should conform.
Yes, H. H as in hallelujah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
This is on the amendment?
This is for the amendment.
Right.
Everybody understand?
We're voting on the amendment.
H.
Eight twenty-six, six H. Identifying information, logos, et cetera.
Alderman John Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Eight to one?
Eight to one. The ordinance passes, I mean, the amendment passes. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote on the ordinance?
H three, okay. Okay. Alderman John Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Eight to one?
Eight to one. The ordinance passes. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Dogs, cats, animals, and foul.
Yes. Following the food trucks with item H four, ordinance 23010, amending various sections of Title IX, Public Safety, Chapter Four, Dogs, Cats, Animals, and Fowl of the City Code. The Human Services Committee has asked your consideration for this ordinance. The vote in committee actually was three votes against the ordinance, two votes in favor of the ordinance. And so, I'm recommending denying this ordinance.
Alderman Wynn?
Okay. Because Alderman John Baptiste is making me get up and say this. It's my understanding from a conversation I had earlier today with someone who's involved with the committee, the backyard hen committee, that an email went out yesterday to that group telling them that we would not be voting on this this evening.
Obviously, we've got to hold it. That's why no chicken folks...
I know, I know. And I, and I actually responded to that person and said, yes, I believe it is, it is on the agenda. And, but as, as Lionel has pointed out, no one is here tonight in support of that. And so, perhaps they all didn't look. So, I, we can...
At the next meeting.
But they were here.
Oh, some of them were here?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Excuse me. They were, I, I take it back. They just didn't stay. Never mind.
You know, I, I'm looking at my email box, and I see that I got an email from one of those, a member of that group indicating that he thought that there was not anything happening on the chickens tonight. So, I don't know where he got that, but...
Shall we?
I, I have some discussion if Alderman Wynn's done.
No. I'm just telling all of the, the rest of you that, that that was my understanding. But I, I didn't know whether someone was here or not.
They were here.
They said they were here.
Alderman Wilson?
Thank you. I, I would like to actually, in the draft, have three things looked at and, and perhaps revised. In the existing draft of the ordinance, to me, it's not real clear on whether we're licensing the hens or the coops. And I would like it articulated clearly that we're licensing the coops. At least, that's what I would be interested in, in possibly supporting. I think it's too hard to license the chickens, you know. Who's going to keep track? Is that, you know, Rover Chicken? I, I think it's, it's, it would be much too complex to try to license the individual chickens. In addition, I would propose that we set a limit on the number of, of coops that are approved for some set period of time to, in effect, give this a trial period. So, if we could set a number at like, you know, 25 or 30 coops...
Too many.
Too many? Whatever, a number. Some number for discussion, but I would like it set at a set number.
Zero.
So, we can see if this is going to work or not work. And then the last point would be, in considering the, the neighbor consent portion of the provision, I have some strong reservations about requiring neighbor consent. I think maybe a notice would be more appropriate. I know people aren't going to like this, but that's what I think would be more appropriate. So, I would be interested in seeing what a draft with that type of provision would look like.
Alderman Burris?
I actually just want to make sure to clarify what Alderman Wilson was saying about the 20, the 20 coops. You're not...
Fourth ward.
Just in the fourth ward. Alderman Rainey, I, I think that what you meant, you mean for, start with 20 overall licenses for the city, not 20 coops per household.
Right, 20.
Right, I know, I know. I just, I, I just wanted to clarify it because it's...
You thought 20 coops per yard?
Yeah. No, I think, that's, that's, when, when Alderman Grover put her head on the table, I knew that there was some confusion, and I just wanted to, to clear that it's, you mean licenses for overall for the city, correct?
Members of the press, please delete that portion of your blogs and, and make the appropriate adjustments. Alderman Wilson did not suggest 20 coops per yard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lest I, I not go home tonight. No, 20, 20-ish licenses total for the city. Thank you.
Alderman Fisk?
Does that mean, Alderman Wilson, that you're moving to hold this until that is written? Or what?
Yes, I'd like to move to hold it to get those adjustments to the draft ordinance.
Second.
Do we have to vote on that? Sure.
Is there a second?
All right. We need a roll call.
Nope.
All in favor?
No.
Don't...
No.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right. Let's go have executive, no, let's have call of the wards.
Call of the wards.
Your mayor's done in case you haven't noticed. Alderman Sean Baptiste?
Yeah, I call my next-door neighbor here. That's my call of the ward.
Alderman Wynn?
Yes, I'd like to announce a third ward town hall meeting for Thursday, October 7th, at Lincoln School Auditorium, our regular place, from 7:00 to 8:30 in the evening. Thank you.
And I want to make a point of thanking Nessbug Yale, a fourth ward resident who organized a Laramore Park cleanup day. She and a number of other, a large number of volunteers did a fantastic job cleaning up the park. I also want to acknowledge Paul DeGostino's assistance with, with the project. They did a great job. It was a rainy day. They got a lot of work done, and it looks terrific, and I really appreciate that effort. And I also want to thank the Evanston Bike Club and all of the other volunteers who organized the North Shore Century, which I had the opportunity to enjoy riding in yesterday. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Yes, I just want to say that we had the occasion to welcome the first mosque in Evanston last Friday at 2045 Brown. And so, they are officially open, using only the lower level. But it was a wonderful occasion. Chief, both fire chief and police chief, other staff members, as well as City Clerk was there with us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to announce a sixth ward meeting on September 22nd, Wednesday, September 22nd. I realize this is in conflict with my duties on the Economic Development Committee, but it was the only time, roughly the only time this month, that we could get ComEd, Representative, and the Evanston Police Department together to answer some of the questions and concerns in the ward. So, I hope you'll turn out for that meeting, September 22nd, 7 o'clock at Three Crowns.
Alderman Grover?
No report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
No report.
Alderman Burris?
I just want to say thank you to everyone that came to the 9/11 memorial service on Saturday morning.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I have a motion pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120 slash 2A. I move that the City Council convene in the executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel litigation in minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in an executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These, these exceptions are five ILCS 120 slash 2A, C1, C11, and C21. Is there still a second? Thank you.
Could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman John Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?